I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, thank you. Second? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Motion carried unanimously. Our only action here today is to discuss the Cassuth County Library Association allocations for fiscal year 25. Is there any comments the board would like to make before we entertain public comments? Anyone from the public that would like to speak?
Can I start?
Yeah, please come up to the podium and state your name and then feel free.
Sure. My name is Lani Mitchell and I'm the Director at the Wesley Public Library. And I am the President of the Cassuth County Library Association. They're all sitting back here. And thank you to everybody for coming today, supporting our little libraries. We appreciate that a lot. I handed out to Tammy to show you guys just a few stats from our libraries. And this is from 2022. Obviously, there are 12 libraries in Cassuth County. Total, we have 123 years of director experience. So, we do have a couple newbies. But most of us are, we have a 38-year, we have a 25-year, we have a 26-year. We're not new at this necessarily, although I don't like doing this. We just, obviously, the elephant in the room is that number that we were told last week. And I've seen a couple different versions of the numbers for the county budget allocations for the library. So, I guess what we would like to know as directors, where did that number come from? And how did we get to today? Anybody?
Does anyone want to speak? Um, so, the number that we have in the budget right now is 85,000. That is keeping in mind the legal figures in the code, which are six and three-quarters cents per thousand valuation in the assessed area for rural. Since the county's supposed to tax the unincorporated areas, cities are supposed to tax their incorporated areas. So that's, that's one of the foundational pieces.
So, I don't know that I have the exact number. I'll give a wild guess. That $85,000 we were told was to be distributed evenly amongst the 12 libraries. And if I'm correct, it's $7,083 per library for the year, correct? Last year, and in previous years, we've never run into this problem. But I will say, I'll give an estimate as to what Wesley received from the county last year was north of 20,000.
Twenty, twenty thousand, six seventy-one?
Yep, that's on.
And four cents for the-
And four cents. That helps. Every penny counts. And so now we're going from that to $7,000. And so while we understand, and I emailed you all last week, and I hope that you got that. And we understand, we've been watching this, and we understand that the budget is tight, and a $7,000 per year funding is literally a death knell for at least four of the libraries here. And that's not just, oh, we have to close the library. That means that we have to go back to our cities who have to then amend their budgets. I believe Fenton figured out that even if she worked for free, that $7,000 wouldn't, wouldn't make the library operational for Fenton. So, I know that we're asking for reconsideration. But I can't stress enough how that's gonna be ugly for a lot of libraries. Algonah probably took the biggest hit because they are so far up, I mean, Algonah versus Wesley, there's, we all know the difference. But I just, I think seven grand doesn't even keep the lights on and the internet paid for. And so now our cities are also scrambling, wondering what they're supposed to do with a 75-ish percent cut from the county also. That's about all I have. I just wondered how we came to that 85,000 versus the 273 or whatever it was last year, 273,000.
I think, Lani, too, I'll just make a quick comment. On the city council in Laverne as well, and with the state legislation this year, the cities can no longer levy for libraries and civic centers, was that language in that? And so, city funding also has been cut to libraries that was formerly there. Just something to consider for the board.
I think for sure we have one library, Algonah, had a levy that she doesn't get anymore either. I just, another question that we had was, was any other department cut 75% like we were?
Not to my knowledge.
Wasn't the EMA got 75%?
EMA was cut 75.
The tax dollars, yes, but not the total budget.
And can you speak to how your vote tomorrow to raise salaries would be affected?
The current budget has zero dollars in raises for all.
Well, that's not what the agenda says.
If you're talking about the EMS staff specifically, what are you? You're referring to the elected official compensation schedule? Is that what you are?
Far down on the page, I believe that's it.
What we have voted on in this boardroom is 0% raise for everyone, including elected officials.
Glad to hear it.
And I mean, I do have some of my own comments laid out here. I could go through them now, or I could leave it open.
I've got a question. Last year was, you said it was 273 and some change, 273?
Around there.
Could you please state your name?
Yeah, Wendy Zelski.
Please come up to the podium.
I'll say a little, just a quick question. You stated 273, I'm Wendy Zelski, I'm the mayor of Soy City. 273, 285, something like that is what it was. And it's dropped to 85K this year. And just to, I didn't quite catch your explanation of the 7.37 allotment.
Six and three-quarters.
Six and three-quarters cents per thousand of assessed value in the unincorporated areas.
And that dropped that much from last year? Or what was last year's?
No, we have just been substantially above the minimum.
And we're no longer above the minimum?
The calculation-
Or did the supervisors choose not to be above the minimum?
The calculation for those dollar figures comes out to like 84 and some change.
Right. Last year's calculation was what?
Would have been less than that.
Okay, I'm not following you, I'm not-
We have-
The, I think maybe a better way, the state minimum that we're required to fund would grow a little bit with valuations every year.
Right.
And so, it would have been slightly less, the minimum would have been slightly less, but the county's allocation was considerably more.
So, so the 200,000 we had last year that we're not going to get this year, where'd that go?
That was what, that's why we're talking about it today.
Okay, no, my question is where'd it go?
That's, that's part of the rural basic fund account, and that's-
So that's going to be spent somewhere else within the county? It's gonna benefit a community program, or?
It's not really being reallocated anywhere, it's being cut at the moment.
Cut? I guess I'm not understanding. Anybody else understanding that?
No.
I think what I have prepared will answer your questions, but I wanted to open the floor for questions and stuff before that, so.
Okay.
I'm in such places with Lori.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good to see you again. I'm Lori Walton, Director of the Algonah Public Library. And I believe Cassuth County libraries, all of them, are important. And we thank you for meeting with us today. We very much appreciate it. The Cassuth County libraries are grateful for the support that the Board of Supervisors has shown libraries this year and in the past. That support has enabled us to do a lot of good things for the county, within the county. Last week, I was very surprised to learn that you plan to cut next year's funding for Cassuth County libraries by approximately 75%. I'm wondering why there's such a drastic cut? And how were we supposed to find out this information other than attending every one of your meetings? It's put us in a difficult position. I'm often surprised when people ask, do we still need libraries? And my answer is a definite yes. And when I am at the library, some of the things that I see are local groups meeting together, parents and children having supervised visits, students who roar into our libraries after school every day. And they're using computers, they're taking part in programming that we do. I see people my age and older who are learning how to use computers, learning about features on their cell phone, learning about how to manage all their photos of grandchildren. And that is thanks to a lot of the work that you have done, providing us with the TET grants. And I also see students, this picture amazed me, I just happened to catch it by chance, eight students who are working collaboratively together, they have their laptops out, their notebooks. I had to snap this picture because to me, this is what libraries are all about. So much takes place in our libraries. During the last 12 months, Algonah Public Library has had over 42,000 visits through the door. We have a number counter at the door, keeps track of that every day for us. During the last 12 months, 9,400 items were checked out just to rural Cassuth residents. Now, if those people in rural Cassuth County had to purchase those books themselves, and we use the $20, which is a discounted price, the value of that is over $180,000. They would have had to pay that amount themselves. That dollar amount doesn't include the extensive programming that they take advantage of, their access to technology, which much of it you have provided, space available for meetings, or the assistance that library staff provides them. Rural residents are making really good use of the library. And library directors are operating those libraries like a business. So each year, we project incoming revenue and we also project outgoing expenses. We use great care because we know that we're working with taxpayer money. Your county contribution makes up 12% of the Algonah library's budget. The amount that smaller libraries receive, your contribution makes up a much larger percentage. And we rely on those contributions. So, all of the Cassuth County business owners, whether they're in town or on the farm or in another rural area, know that a sudden, unexpected 13% loss of revenue will require difficult decisions. The libraries that are facing a larger percentage than that, they're gonna make some drastic decisions, and I don't want to see that for Cassuth County libraries. So, as you consider future support, I invite you to stop at any of our county libraries to see what's happening and learn more about what we do and how your contributions assist us. And I ask that you reconsider your current decision to drastically cut next year's budget, next year's library contribution, and again, we thank you very much for meeting with us today.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just a note, Algonah's was 12%, Soy City is 85%. Of the money is county contribution.
My name is Amber Harris and I'm the library director in Laverne. Laverne is a very small community. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to let the board supervisors know just how it works in a small town versus how it works in, say, our smaller towns like Wesley and Laverne. We're not only offering library services, we are bus stops. We are a safe place for parents to have their children wait for them to come and get them after school. The mean income in Laverne is much lower, obviously. So, we provide a lot of services for free to these families because they simply cannot afford to have home internet, they can't afford to do these things. We're also doing community outreach. Right now, we have a food program going for our kids after school because a lot of these children, again, like I said, are, the income's lower in Laverne. They don't have enough food to get through the weekend. So, as a library, we decided we're gonna put in a snack station, and so we're doing outreach programs to get to the people in the community that need it. Our senior coffee group, they meet every day, and we keep tabs on them. You know, there's, in a small community, you know, if somebody doesn't show up for coffee that morning, there's gonna be a phone call, hey, you're doing okay, you know? We take care of each other. And I'm just hoping that the board supervisors reconsider, and we'll take care of its library so that we can continue to take care of our community.
Thank you.
My name's Lori Peterson. I am the Director of the Fenton Library. And I do want to start by saying that we do truly appreciate the money that we have received from you in the past. It has made a tremendous impact at every library in this county. To give you a little background, how this, these cuts would affect the Fenton Library. Last year, we received approximately $20,800 from the county. That is pretty close to 60% of our entire budget. With $7,000 and change this year, that would be a $14,000 cut from our budget, which is not sustainable. The Fenton Library will need to close. That's not a threat, that is a reality. We basically, what does it mean? It isn't just the Fenton Library. Other small rural libraries are gonna be in the same position as us. And as Amber said very eloquently a few minutes ago, we are so much more than just a place to check out the books. We are the social workers of our communities. We are the welcoming community center of our communities, just to give you an idea. In the small communities like Fenton and Lone Rock, who contracts with Fenton, so they use us as their library, we are the community center where residents can chat and have social interaction. We're the social services center where patrons receive help, accessing and applying for support through Medicaid, Medicare, Social Security, Heat Assistance, and many more agencies. We're the place where patrons can come to find resources and support for physical, emotional, and mental health. We are the community educators through programs on cyber safety, local history, and educational presentations. We are the place where children from preschool on up can take part in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics activities on a regular basis. We're the place where toddlers and preschoolers can come to develop literacy and socialization skills. We are the free Wi-Fi hotspot in town. We are the computer and printer access for community members who don't have access to computers. I am the tech person for people in my community who can't drive and will come there and need help being able to use their laptop, or their iPad, or their phones. We are the safe and welcoming space for the school-aged children to come after school. I have children who come to my library, who come there because it's not safe to be at home. And they will have nowhere to go. We are the place where you can special order books and movies from any library in Iowa through our interlibrary loan program. We are the place where you can meet and talk with other book lovers throughout our two book clubs. And many of my book club members are here, and I know many other members from libraries throughout the county are here as well. We are the place that strives to assist underserved portions of our population when nobody else seems to care. Cassuth County libraries are the place where you will always be greeted with a smile and you'll be made to feel welcome, no matter who you are. So, we are asking you to please reconsider and be able to continue to fund our libraries so that, as Amber mentioned, we can fund and we can support and we can be there for the people in our communities. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nikki Brewer. I'm from Burke, and I'm the former library director. I retired a few months ago.
Congratulations.
One thing that I've had people in talking about this, they go, well, could the library cut ours, maybe, to make some of it up? Well, what'll happen if a lot of these libraries, especially, again, the small ones, if they cut ours is, then they're not going to meet the state requirement for accreditation. And if you don't have your state accreditation, now you're gonna lose your state funding. It's not a lot, but, you know, when you've got tiny budgets, tiny bits help. So that was just a statement there, because I have been asked that. But I do have two questions. In looking at the budget a little bit, am I missing something? Have you had a substantial decrease in income for the next fiscal year? No? Then why are, if there has not been a substantial decrease in income, then why are there massive budget cuts for various departments? And it looks like the majority of those have been about 10%. Why are the libraries being singled out at 75%? I think we all understand a small budget cut, if necessary. But why isn't it at least being equitably and fairly handled amongst all departments? And why are the 12 small libraries being singled out?
I think it's not so much that the revenue has gone down, it's expenses have gone up and revenue has not matched that.
But expenses have gone up for everybody.
Right.
So, I understand, we understand having to cut programs or something out of our budget to be able to keep our income the same. I mean, we're all doing it at home. But I guess, I guess that's the big question, is why, why are the libraries being hit at 75% when no other department is? That's the answer, I think, pretty much everybody in your-
This is a great question, that's why we're here to talk about it.
Hi, I'm Rick Murphy, Mayor of Algonah. I think Lori Walton asked a question that didn't get addressed. When and how were the libraries notified of this cut? I think in the email, you've been working on this since February the 22nd. Do I hear a response from somebody?
That, February the 22nd is when that decision was made, yes.
But when were the libraries notified, and how were they notified?
They weren't. They weren't.
Rest of my case.
Hello.
Hi, Jan.
I'm Kathy Gerber from Laverne, Carter County Supervisor.
We can't hear you.
Okay, I'm I'm Kathy Gerber from Laverne, and I'm not a librarian, and I don't know the statistics, but I do know that how we spend our money reflects our values. And I think values are what we're really talking about here, and maybe $200,000. And it's gotta go somewhere if you've got it coming in. And I think, I don't want to be political, but our state has done a lot to trash education in general. Kim's talking about raising salaries for teachers, but we'll see if that happens. I think the county has to hold the line on that. And libraries are places of education. And as you've heard, all the other things, it's so impressive, what a bunch of impressive librarians we have here. And to not have those in the in the community would be a tragedy. So, consider cutting it 20% instead of 75. And wherever you're gonna put the money otherwise, they can do without them.
Hi, I'm Don Yeager. I'm from Fenton. Grew up there, graduated from there, left the country for 37 years, and now I'm back. And I want to talk a little bit more about what Lori spoke about, what happens at the Fenton Public Library, and a lot of this happens also at the other smaller libraries around the county. And the one thing that started up under our previous library director was a, I can't remember what she called it. It was a public program where we feature people from the community, the Lone Rock and Fenton communities, to come up and talk about something. And it turned out to be wildly successful. I'll give you just a few examples. We had one fellow who was originally from Esterville, and he was a college buddy of mine in Iowa City, who started up an NGO in the northern provinces of Laos. He went over there to help women who make bags out of vines in the jungle. And they use these bags to carry everything. They're beautiful little bags, they carry anything, they don't break. He talked about that, very, very interesting. We had two gals from Lone Rock who were ghostbusters. And they, we asked them if they would like to come and talk. And they came, they'd never done this before. It was so interesting, it was so entertaining, it was a real hoot to hear these ladies talk about how you go about ghost busting. We had the former director, sports director at KIC Radio, Spencer, also a college or a high school roommate of mine, classmate, I should say. His specialty was baseball. And he knows personally all of the top players, especially in the Minnesota Twins, so he came in and talked about baseball. He brought some of his autographed baseballs, including one from Babe Ruth. You didn't get it from him personally, but he has it. We have, we had somebody come in and talk about the Presidential Records Act. She was a Fenton girl, she's here today visiting. She was the archivist of the United States under President Clinton. These are just some of the examples of programming that gets done in these rinky-dinky little towns in Iowa that most people don't think anything about, except the people in the town. One of the most important things for me about the Fenton Public Library is its place for people to come in and meet on a daily basis when the library's open, have a cup of coffee, chat with their friends. It's this sense of community that shows up in the library and is supported by the library. So, I'm just asking you keep this sense of community alive. If this cut goes through, the Fenton community will, well, I won't say it'll close down, but it'll be a lot less than it is now. Thank you.
Hi, my name is James Holderson. I'm the library director at Tocque.
Can I talk to Algonah, please?
Yes, sorry about that. I'm the library director for- I'm the library director for Totanka. If it was not for the state's required amount, would y'all want to fund the libraries at all? Or would you want to cut it completely from the budget?
I wouldn't want to cut it completely from the budget.
Okay.
It's hard to answer.
No, I understand, but also, money is also a reality, and it's a reality for y'all as well. Overall, the amount that you cut from your budgets that was allocated to the libraries, I think it was around 0.475% of the entirety of the expenditures. Even if you cut the entirety of the amount, it's a difference compared to the rest of the budget. But at the same time, I understand that the funding for the county is a little bit tight at the moment. Is there any way to at least increase the budget by a little bit for the libraries to keep them running, even though it will cut into the expenditures, and increase that cost for everyone else as well?
There, there are possible things we can discuss yet.
Okay.
And I, yep.
We'll make sure we answer your question.
Thank you.
I get you.
If you don't mind, I'm down in here, so I don't want to fust pass everything. Isn't there a property tax increase going into Fenton next year? It was 15% this year, it's 15% again next year? So we're doing 30% increase in two years?
No.
That's not what the statement said.
Yeah, that's not what was put on, that is what was put on Facebook. That is not accurate information. We did not have a 15% increase last year, and we've had quite a few conversations, especially recently, and are not planning on a 15% increase for this year either. Should be more in the 5% to 6% range.
Thank you.
I think you need to answer some of the questions, and then maybe we could come back and talk again.
Okay, yep.
Could you state what your name was?
Me?
Yes.
Colleen M. Devine.
Thank you.
I am not a resident of Cassuth County, but I was born and raised here. My mother lives here, so I'm in town frequently to help her. I have nieces and nephews with children and families. Since their mothers, my, two of my sisters are dead, these are their grandchildren. So I consider them my children and my grandchildren. They use those libraries every single day.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Davis. Not a member of any library board, just a taxpayer and a patron of the libraries. And my question is, because you guys are gonna discuss this, I want you to discuss, just for all these people, to dovetail on what the mayor said about communication. I look at the people that showed up here today. Well, you guys, I watch you on YouTube all the time, and I don't see crowds like this when you're talking about raising taxes. And the communication for this, to me, was astounding, or lack thereof. But it just has to be in this room. How many people in this room made plans to come to this meeting three weeks ago? Two weeks ago? Last week?
Last night.
How many found out last 40 hours?
Last night.
Last 40 hours.
Kyle, when you say, an email was sent out in February to let the libraries know there was being budget cut.
There was no email.
What I'm asking is, because I went through, when I heard this, about the budget cuts at this level for libraries, I went back and I went through the minutes all the way back to the first of the year. I don't find anywhere where any one of you gentlemen put your name on a motion and said, "I move that we slice the libraries to the point they have to close." Oh, I second that motion. If you're gonna do it, man up and put your name on it. Who made this recommendation? Rather use the budget line, let's cross that one up. Whose idea was this? And why was it 24 hours ago that all of a sudden there's a special meeting? You see how many people showed up. This is an important thing, that you answer that question about the lack of communication. Thank you.
I just multitasked like crazy to write this down as I was listening, so I know that's one thing that...
Could you introduce yourself?
Yes, librarians are very good at multitasking. My name is Tamara Kelly, and I work at the Algonah Public Library. I'm a part-timer there. I'm originally from Burt, and my mom, Eleanor Stenzel, was a Burt librarian for many, many years, and I grew up. I had a library card at age zero. Crawled around on the library floor and learned how to read. My family did not have a TV when I was growing up, and I learned to read. I was reading the newspaper by the time I was three. I didn't know what I was reading, but I was having fun anyway. So, I, my father was a farmer, and I remember vaguely when a funding issue similar to this came up at that time, and I watched my father come in from the field, shower, change his clothes, and go to the meeting to stand up for the Burt Public Library. So I graduated, I went to college in Dallas, in Banquado, sorry. I moved to Dallas for 25 years, and when I came back, every time I came back, I was always amazed to see that the three most prominent entities on Main Street were the bank, the post office, and the library. Libraries, I feel, are one of the last bastions representing places in our culture where there is no fee for admission, no limit on the amount of time you can spend at a table before you're required to purchase something, and there are no judgments and/or limitations around your personal affiliations with politics or religion. Please, please reconsider this drastic cut to spending for libraries. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
I don't want to make a joke, but I'm Kathy Murray Macy. I'm from Lone Rock, Iowa. And I'm not, I go to...
Can I speak up just a little bit, honey?
Okay. I'm from Lone Rock, Iowa, and I don't have any family, and I go to the library in Fenton. I'm upset because one of you, and I am going to point your fingers, stated that the libraries are a thing of the past. That's not true. I need that library, and I have one eye, I'm blind in one eye. And thank God, I can still drive, I can still read. And we need that library. Please try to straighten this out, will you? But I'm not gonna say. We've got a stated two, and we've said it. But we need those libraries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Johnson, Mayor of West Bend. I was definitely not going to speak today, but as I'm listening, I also am a speech pathologist for the AEA as well as PRN for a care center in West Bend. The one thing that really hit home to me was, the libraries are used by so many different ages of people. And the one, the one age that is, I have two ages that are dear to my heart, the very young, which is what you all support, and then the aging population, which I am right in there. And so to think about how the library offers all of the different connections of reading, writing, listening, speaking, connecting, and how that affects their cognitive stability as we all age, I feel is so, so vital to our community. And so that just was kind of resonating with me as I was sitting over here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to ask board members, when was the last time you were in a library?
It's probably been a couple of years.
Last Thursday.
I was gonna say. That's the Carter woman.
Sometime within the last year.
A couple years ago.
Where? Where? Have you ever been invited to the library?
You have children or grandchildren? I hope you three don't, or don't claim them anyway.
I got two kids.
Do you want your children to have the ability to go to that library and take advantage of the things we're just talking about?
Yep.
Then please do something to keep it open.
I'm Mary Ree from Burt, and I'm here because I really believe in the libraries. I do not have anything to do with them outside of, I'm one of the board. I'm wondering, are we gonna go to a four-day school week? Do we know that yet? You know, it would be nice, I didn't want to talk until after you people gave some talk, so we have something to deal with, so we can question you. But if they end up going to a four-day school week, there's gonna be another day for kids to have nothing to do. You know, we're talking about how this world is going to hell the way it is. I mean, and it's because everything is getting so expensive, and I think everybody needs to understand that if we don't help our kids, what are we gonna have for the rest of their lives? You know? I have grandchildren, I have children, I have great-grandchildren. My grandchildren love going up to Burt, to the library, because they put things together. They have a thing up there that's all set up. They can make cars, they can make, and it's not out of Legos, it's something that's intelligent, that takes intelligence to do. It's a scam cart. And I just, there's no way you can shut down a library. The people that work in the library probably need jobs also. And so what's gonna happen if you take that money away, even the people that work in the library will not have one. So they'll have to find another job somewhere else. I just want you to know, I've had a recent death. If I didn't have my library to go to, I don't know what I would have done. Because they help lift you up, and that's all I have to say. I just really think you need to think about this, and I think you need to tell us what you're thinking, so we can answer that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Lusher. And when I moved here in 1985, the first thing I did when I got here was to get a library card. And I've been using the library, my children have been using the library, now my grandchildren use the library. So I think, I really invested in the library. But I think the questions are much bigger than just the library. I think there's rumors going out there, and there's maybe a lack of transparency. I think people are wondering, why are we in this position? Are we in a crisis situation of some sort? What were the ending balances for rural services as of March 31st? What are they gonna be June 30th? And how do you feel about those balances? Are they considered low? And I think, you know, a lack of communication maybe, but right now, I think the important thing is gonna be transparency. And of course, I really hope that the libraries aren't gonna be taking this terrible cut.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sandy Long, and I'm the director of the Whittemore Public Library. And I, I guess I'm the senior director, I've been there 38 years. I'm retiring the end of June, and I'm worried for the future of my library. As it stands, we will have to probably cut back one to two days per week. And we too are the center of everything for Whittemore. Sometimes we're just that person that some person who's alone will come in and talk about their problems, or their needs, whatever, and the kids. And we're also concerned about when we go to four-day school weeks, that those kids need a place to go, which we do serve them now. It's a big deal. We have snacks and stuff after school for those kids who inhale everything. And I don't know, I'm just, hope that you can reconsider, because we really need to keep working. And also, I'm pretty good at calling 911 for some of our patrons who have health problems. So, you know, we're there for everybody.
Hi, I'm Callie Munson. I'm supposed to disclose that I'm not here for the KCEDC. I'm strictly here for libraries. A few things that I want to touch on, they've already been covered, but I just want to reiterate, there's a lack of third places in our county. It's places that you can go for free. The first two, that you can go for free at work and home. So the library being an absolutely free resource to everyone is huge. Second of all, I'm from Burt. Have you guys been to Burt? There's nothing to do. When our pool closed, it was, oh, the kids can go to the library. What happens when we don't have a library? The other thing that I wanted to touch on was that last week, you guys signed the proclamation that we're against child abuse, right? As a county? So, we're taking away somewhere that kids can go and be safe. I mean, that's just a huge issue. But that's all I have to say. Please, please reconsider. We love libraries.
I'm Art Pixler. I'm a retirement educator. I'm the last superintendent of Central Community Schools. Currently, I'm on the North Union School Board, and I'm also on the Fenton City Council. I understand completely, having served as 13 years as a superintendent, the problems you encounter with budgets, especially when the state underfunds education the way it has all the time I was the superintendent. But the other thing I know is what Kathy said. It's about values. As I prepared budgets along with my business manager for the board, it's about where your priorities are. And that's why I'm asking you to do, is set what your values are, your priorities are, as you determine what you're gonna do for the libraries in this county. Thank you.
Like so many of these folks, I wasn't prepared to talk. Go ahead. No, okay.
Mine's short.
You can make it a little longer.
I'm Linda Farrell. I'm the city clerk in Whittemore, and I have worked for the city for 38 years. For 38 years, I've put a budget together. I understand the process, good or bad. But one thing I wanted to say, in doing what you're doing as proposed, you would be moving Whittemore back to 2015. Our library would be moving backwards instead of forwards. Our community would be doing the same, and it would hurt everybody. There's no, nothing good about your proposal, unfortunately. And I've stood there and had to be the bad guy before, but this is dramatic and hard to swallow. So please reconsider for Whittemore, for the county, for everybody. Thank you.
My name is Dean Mallor. I'm the mayor in Fenton, and I serve on the North Union School Board with Art. And I don't have comments as much as, I feel like you haven't answered some of their questions. When are you going to do that?
My intent was to allow people to speak, and then I have, I have some major points prepared and stuff, and I'm gonna open it up to the rest of the board.
So then my one question that I would like to be answered is, why did you choose the libraries for such drastic cuts compared to everything else? And I would like someone to answer that eventually. Why did you choose the libraries? Okay?
I'm Susan Holtratz from the city of Fenton, been a city clerk 33 years. I don't know if you opened my letter up, but I just want to treat, nobody, we do budgets. You were doing your budget, all the cities were doing our budget. We had no idea that you were gonna cut such a drastic thing. Why weren't we know? We were doing it. We had to have stuff in on time, everything. So where were you guys to say, oh, by the way? Because we were doing it. So I put in what I have done for the last, and you guys have been excellent. At 33 years, 30 years ago, we got $8,500. 30 years ago, $8,500. Now you're talking, now 30 years later, you're going down to $7,000. And the city of Fenton does not, I mean, we do not have extra tax dollars to supplement. Like you said, the cities are to supplement. We don't. We're one of the smallest, if you would look at our valuation, you know, the whole county. per our population. So it would be a dire week. The library is our, up in the city. So I just wanted to hopefully that you have read my letter too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mark Riesner, pastor in Whittamore and Fenton. Didn't grow up here, of course, I've been here about 10 years now. And I got a call from the seminary at the call service, which is this week. And what they say is, hey, here's where you're going. I had no idea. They said, you're going to Whittamore? I said, where is that? Spent here 10 years, I still don't know where that is. But one of the advantages that we have in a small town is community. Growing up in a bigger city, I had 900 people in my freshman class. That's more people to live in Whittamore. Right? So a lot of people didn't know each other, don't care about each other, but community is where you have something that unifies you and you have it together. Our society is becoming very, very fractured and splintered. I get my facts from here, you get your facts from here, I watch this, you watch that, these are my... And everybody's against each other. What do we have left for community? Not many things. The library is one of those things. The loss of libraries historically has been associated with great tragedy. To this day, people still lament the loss of the library in Alexandria. America was discovered because when Constantinople was falling, they exported their libraries and that sparked Russia into a great time in their history. They're far away from that now, but they suddenly discovered in Europe, wait a minute, we have all these books now. Renaissance, all of a sudden, big boom there. And then they said, you know what? If they have occupied Constantinople, we now have this knowledge and we can sail around the world. And then they got here. And we're all here because people saved their libraries. And so that's very important for us as Americans. I'm just a nerd who likes to read, but thank you guys for having this meeting. You know, we all have tragedies, losses. Library in Alexandria was one. I cut my finger, that's a small one. You guys, this morning thought, well, there's a small meeting, nobody will be here. So thank you guys for taking the time to listen to us.
Mark, tell them Alexandria is in Egypt.
Not the one in Virginia?
No.
But the one in Virginia is named after that because Thomas Jefferson was a big nerd who liked books too. So, thank you guys.
I also did not plan to say anything today. Public speaking is not exactly my forte, so bear with me. I pretty much came out of the womb a bookworm, so obviously libraries have, well, specifically the Elbono Library has always been a place I frequented, pretty important to me. The one thing I do, the one unique thing I want to add here is that a few years ago, I had an incident that left me with what I would characterize as severe to moderate to severe agoraphobia, which if you don't know, is basically fear of being out in public. So me standing in front of all these people saying all this is not my idea of a great time. But, but yes, as you can imagine, I don't really get out much, shout into the community. So while all this community stuff is obviously more important than what I'm about to say, I just want to add that my, I do have a library card and it's been very important to me since, again, I don't, I struggle to get out much without potential panic attacks, which makes going to the library a little difficult. But library cards, there's a lot of services online that you can access via library cards. So I get my eBooks, I get my audiobooks, I can still read without, you know, risking having a whole thing, like going out and about. So that's, I just think that was a perspective worth adding.
You've got to be hitting all the points already. I'm Michelle S. C., I'm from rural Fenton, Iowa. I was the previous librarian in Fenton. I'm a teacher, I grew up here, moved away for 35 years, kind of like done, and then came back, 25 years, I'm not that old. And I just want to say, before you make any big decisions about this budget, I would, because I know I've invited you, Mr. Stecker, you are my councilman, or my supervisor, invited you to the library when I was there, and you never came. And it's free, you can go into a library anytime you want, you don't have to be invited. And so I would ask all of you, Tammy too, go to the library for a whole day. Or maybe even like pop in every day in a week. Because it is, until I was a librarian, I told my husband I wasn't going to do this because I don't want to have a heart attack, because I'm so nervous. But go in, because until I was a librarian, I had no idea how many things these human beings do. Oh my goodness, it is a challenge. I'm emotional because I love my little library. And I love my friends. Because that's what community does. Community gives you friends. See, I told you, I'm just emotional. I get like this when I'm mad, so really, it's, it's really I'm mad, more than emotional. I am, I'm really upset that they didn't know ahead of time. Because you guys always kind of dragged your feet. I've been in front of you before, as a librarian, and you never really knew what our budget was going to be. We always had a kind of guess, dependent on the years before. You didn't even give them allowance to guess correctly. Right? You didn't give them enough time. You didn't even give them a warning. And that is what hurts my heart so much. These girls are resourceful and gentlemen, sorry. These women and gentlemen are so resourceful, they make magic out of nothing. They help so many people. If you just would have given them some time, they would have adjusted their sails. So please, give them time, go. Go to the libraries, see what they do. I literally know they save lives. Sorry, again, this is anger, not, this is anger, not sadness. Because I know you'll do the right thing. Right? You guys are awesome, always have been, I don't know you. Carter, you're awesome. Kyle, I want better out of you. This is the teacher in me, okay? This is the teacher in me. You'll do better.
Hello, my name is Amy Frankel-Brant. I'm the news editor at Elbono Publishing for the Coos County Advance. And I want to piggyback on her invite and invite you to Elbono Publishing. In my position, it's a unique position where I get to know what's going on in every single library in the county. Because that's who I go to for stories in the county. And they always have something going on. And there's, in almost every single weekly issue of our newspaper, there is a story about one or more of these libraries in the county. And you can come to Elbono Publishing and look through all of our back issues and see how much they do. So I hope this is you all at Elbono Publishing.
Any other members of the public that would like to make a comment before I open it up to the board?
If you do want to ask a question during the time...
We're not closing the meeting yet.
I'm Dave Legu, I'm the mayor from Tataka. So just a quick question that I would like to have answered by the end of the meeting also. So this $200,000 budget cut, if you spread that across all the other budgets, what percentage would that be?
Very small.
Very small. So other budgets might be able to handle a 1% and 2% paid cut, but a 75% on a library, it's huge. So yeah, if you could have those numbers, that'd be great.
Where is it going?
Any, any other comments right away here, people would like to make? Josh just talked out, so. Jack, do you have any comments you'd like to share?
I think you should give your presentation.
I have a question. If you're going to cut all that money from the libraries, where just extra money going to go?
Jack, anything else you want to share?
It's not, it's not extra money, it's not there, it's gone. It's money that we, we cut it out of the budget, we'll put another million dollars on top of that.
Roger, anything you'd like to share?
Well, just, our discretionary fund, it's about half of it is libraries. And out of the, out of the $473,545, that's our discretionary fund. The rest of it almost has to meet metrics in the budget, which are hard to explain in a short period of time.
We're smart people.
If we go to the libraries and read, you can try.
But it comes out of the rural budget.
What about raising taxes?
Well, we had a lot of farmers, landowners come in here and they were telling us that their taxes, their prairie, their land was going to go by $9 an acre.
If the little bit that the libraries do not have, I'm a landowner, that would not have made any difference.
And I'm a landowner too, and I don't want to pay tax and have the libraries cut. So think about it.
The room was full of farmers, just like it is today, and they have different, different story than we do.
How many farmers?
How many landowners?
Raise your hand if you're a landowner.
I, I think it's a little more complicated than just that, but I'll get to my comments here shortly.
Didn't you say that your income didn't change?
I'll outline that in a second. Did you have anything you want to say?
Go ahead.
Okay. So I spent...
I have a question.
Josh, is there anything you want to say before I...
You have a question, Matthew?
Share.
Well, my main question is, why were we not allowed, why didn't we have to learn just by chance to even know that you did this to our libraries? Why weren't you? I mean, that's the thing that has upset a lot of us people in this room.
Yep.
You answer that question and tell me why. Nobody goes to, let me see, ever go to the library?
Well, first of all, I, and I'll answer that question. First of all, I do appreciate all of you being here today and I'm glad we can make this work, to have this conversation, and that, that's very important to have. And I will take as a portion of that responsibility, making that decision on February 22nd in a budget workshop, that, that you were never notified and that was wrong. And, and so the fact that, and I know Amber gave the city our budget, her budget, a couple months ago, at least. And so I understand where you guys are at in that process and, and just kind of being blindsided by this. And I wasn't aware of that, but it's still, that should have, we should have been more proactive in, in communicating with you. So just want to apologize for that.
Exactly. We fixed our, we've, we've, nothing's really changed.
And then as far as the, what was your question?
Why didn't we not know?
Oh, I did answer that, okay. But I just wanted to thank you for all you do. I know, like I said, I did use, I'm not in the time of place where I use the library often, you know, place of life. But I do use it and I know they're a wonderful focus in the community. I know in Laverne, it, there's not really anything else open during the day. And so it's, I've taken some continuing education classes and we didn't have internet for a few days last week after the storm. So I went up to the library and worked on things and, and I appreciate that service. But, but we'll, we'll continue the conversation here and Kyle will go ahead and share with me.
Josh, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, I just wanted to read here what Carter was saying, that, you know, probably not the best way of communication, that is something that I do feel we need to work better on, is communication with these types of things. I've had other conversations and some stuff that I'm going to be bringing up in the near future, with the rest of the board, on making sure that we do get communications on things, updates weekly on what's being, you know, decided in the boardroom. That has definitely been lacking and I do apologize for that. But we will, we will address that and we'll make sure going forward that we do better of notifying about big changes. And as far as looking to, you know, resolve this issue, we are going to look and, and I am going to push to get funding back. Whether, what that looks like right now, I can't really pretend to say, you know, where we're going to pull those numbers from, but we are going to look.
You said discretionary budget, what does the word discretionary mean, Roger?
Those are the budget items that we have total control over. There isn't very many. The rest of it...
Various community organizations and projects.
So theoretically, some of that money could be sent towards the libraries?
It comes out of rural basic, the discretionary funds, that's what I'm...
Not all, no, they don't.
Well, the libraries...
The libraries do, but not all discretionary.
No.
There's, and I'll address that briefly and then roll into my other comments and stuff here. The piece of our budget that Roger's referring to of discretionary funds is like a two-sided page that we have, a list of different organizations that request money. Those are not internal departments, those are external things. And, and it's, for lack of a better term, it's just a way they're organized and categorized. They do come out of different funds, libraries is out of rural. But that's, that's only one piece of the equation. So I do want to echo what Carter and Josh had just said about apologizing for the communication and intending to do better on that in the future. And I want to thank everyone who has called, emailed, obviously, and shown up today. None of, none of the decisions that we have to make here in the boardroom, of all of the pieces of the budget, do I take lightly. This is, was not an easy one either. But they are each one piece in a, in a bigger picture, which is our county budget as a My support for reducing funding for libraries was predicated on that bigger picture, which I'll outline as we go here. While I still wanted to make sure we address the legal criteria, which is our obligations in the code, I did highlight that earlier as well, of six and three-quarters cents per thousand of assessed value in the rural area. For us, that dollar figure is just below $85,000, $84 and some change, did the math on that quite a while ago. Yes, this is a substantial difference of approximately $188,000 from the roughly $273,000 put towards libraries in, in this current budget year. As just discussed, libraries are funded out of the rural basic account due to the structure that is outlined in the code of Iowa, where the counties tax the unincorporated areas, cities tax the incorporated areas. The expenses of the rural basic fund are a big concern to me for many reasons, but primarily because of the state's property tax reform bill from last year, which was House File 718. It put limits on what we could levy and due to those limits and where our valuations came in and how those calculations broke out, the actual new dollars we could levy was about $30,000. Rural basic, the rural basic fund... Rural basic, the rural, rural basic fund also receives the revenue from local option sales tax. Um, these funds have substantially increased in recent years due to factors like COVID and Amazon shopping, when the state made changes to include sales tax and online purchases, our revenue increased, which was good. Um, and those are just to name a few. But they have relatively plateaued since their high in FY twenty-two, where we received one-point-three million. Following that, in FY twenty-three budget, we budgeted one-point-one-five million and received one-point-one-eight million. Now, in FY twenty-four, we are budgeting one-point-one-eight, and in FY twenty-five, we are projecting and budgeting one-point-one-seven million. These funds are not guaranteed funds like property taxes. It is, they fluctuate with every dollar that is spent here locally. That's, that's just the nature of the beast. Um, so far, the budget right now includes nearly a million-dollar increase in transfers to the secondary road fund, which is, in my opinion, unsustainable if the effects of House File seven eighteen continue into the future. The current projected deficit for the rural basic fund is about five-hundred-and-fifty thousand from starting fund balance to ending fund balance for FY twenty-five. If we restore funding to libraries back up to the current level, we would be looking at approximately a seven-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-dollar deficit. If we fully fund libraries and do the math on that seven-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-dollar deficit, we would be down to our bare minimum funding levels, our bare minimum fund balance levels of twenty-five percent in about three years. If we have any unforeseen budgetary impacts, that would also shorten that timeframe. So, currently, what is proposed, eighty-nine percent of the current expenditures in the budget for the rural basic fund are slated to go to secondary roads. I believe we need to rein in spending, and to me, that starts with our own secondary road budget. But so far, board has been unable to come to a consensus on that aspect. I would personally support restoring library funding to the levels in the current budget in the form of a budget amendment after the fiscal year starts, if we, as a board, can come up with an agreement in reduction to the secondary road budget to the tune of two-hundred-thousand-plus for fiscal year twenty-five. And to clarify on the timing and the budget amendment piece, with, with what was published, um, our, oh, I lost that document. Um, our service area six is the service area that libraries are funded from. Right now, what is plugged in is the eighty-five thousand that was discussed by the board on the February twenty-second budget workshop. So, while we have to work within the dollars that are available in our fund balance and all of that, we also have to work within what was published for legal reasons. So, to, for a lack of better terms, today, we can't just make a motion to restore funding. We don't, we don't have that ability with what was published. But I am more than, more than willing to have conversations about what we can do to keep our second, or our rural services fund stable and incorporate li- library functioning going into the future. So, that's, that's my position. Um, there are many aspects to it, and it's not taken lightly, but I, I challenge the board as a whole to come up with solutions to this.
So when will a decision need to be made? Isn't it tomorrow?
Today.
Tomorrow, tomorrow is our public hearing for the budget, but what's incorporated in there is the eighty-five-thousand-dollar funding level for libraries. So that's where going, going to what's published with that service area, we can't exceed that at our hearing tomorrow. Um, it would have to be in the form of a budget amendment after the fiscal year starts.
If you made a commitment to doing something like that, what would be the accountability? If you changed your mind later?
Yes.
Um, how would we know? Because it feels like that was the problem this time around. So, what, how would you be held to that if there is such a way to, and how would that information be shared?
So.
Could you not still make a motion to have it, have a discussion either way, or have a, an item on a, an agenda, you know, for future day, or something like that? I.
We could, we could have a motion, have a discussion at a certain day after the fiscal year starts, I suppose. Um, a, at the end of the day, until we get to the timeframe where we could legally take action, there really isn't anything holding that.
What's that timeframe?
After our fiscal year would start in July.
So you could set a date today, then?
We could hypothetically say that we'll.
So it's all, then we got plenty of notice, you, you can set a date.
Well, and, yeah, I mean, we could, we could say the second or the ninth of July and say, we're going to discuss at this point in time, but we can't. So we could do that, but we can't take action and say, we're gonna go back to two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand. We can't do that.
But you could set the date?
Yes.
And you could tell us that?
For, for discussion, yes.
Right now.
Yes, we could.
So Kyle, who do you consider to be, all of you people, who do you consider to be the expert on budgeting? In your group? I mean, who do you really, turn to? I know some things are, you know.
This was my first budget cycle, so not me.
I'm just curious about this because, I mean, you've got a lot of money that you have to work with, and it looks like there are some problems. So, who, who really do you count on, or is there still expert in the, the city, or at the, that, you know, at the county government level that you?
That's our responsibility as supervisors. That's what we're elected to do.
Kyle? I wanna thank you personally for volunteering to be the Cassuth County Punching Bank. I was trying to listen really closely to what you were saying, and I'm not sure I understood. You said that there's disagreement in the board about rural road maintenance stuff?
Secondary road budget figures.
Secondary road budget, there's disagreement in the board, and I thought I heard you say, you are willing to bring forth an amendment to this library question if the rest of the board caves to your request for, to have to agree with you, is that right, whatever you're?
My, my concerns for the rural basic fund are structured around the projected deficit. So, how that plays out is, is part of the conversation. Um, I, I don't, I don't want to see our fund balance get burnt up in three years without the ability to raise taxes due to House File seven eighteen. And that's one of the differences between our general basic, our rural basic, and general supplemental. General supplemental is a specific code section. There are certain things that apply to it, and there is no limit. There's things like elections and, and other things that are core required functions that the state acknowledges may have varying price tags, and those are, those funds are not limited by House File seven eighteen. General basic and rural basic are limited by seven eighteen, depending on where our valuations come in and a lot of other components there. But when the fact of the matter is that we have thirty thousand dollars of max taxable growth for that budget, sustaining a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar deficit is not feasible. And I'd rather, I'd rather look at it now and try and make tough decisions now than going, kicking the can down the road and looking at the edge of the cliff and saying, oh shit, what are we gonna do now?
Is that why you hid it the first time?
What's that?
It feels like you hid this from us, so that we didn't have a way to the backyard.
No, and I don't, I don't think that was the intent.
I'm assuming it was, it feels deliberate.
I, I understand that, and I appreciate those concerns. That, that was not my intent at all. That is, that is the nature of the budget workshops and how they have always been structured. Um, that's a whole nother can of worms to open, but all of those decisions that are made every time we go through a budget workshop, they're not, they're not documented in the minutes, they never have been. Go ahead.
Well, I don't wanna turn this into a political rally, but could you repeat that House File number?
House File seven eighteen.
That affected counties?
And cities, yep.
So one of the things we could do, if you do amend, and then expect, and when the fiscal year starts, when the new fiscal year starts, and take care of this, but going forward from that to help your, your, I, as a former superintendent, I completely understand looking down the road. You could lobby the legislature to undo what they did that doesn't give the funding that we need.
That is, that is a big piece of the equation.
Give them the roll, roll back the twenty percent that they did on commercial property, too, because we just added that all the rule, and that just made this all worse.
Besides libraries and, uh, county roads, what other departments or entities are included in the rural fund? And what, um, what are all the budget cuts for all of those departments, entities?
Rural basic did get, is getting cut on some like painting, white lines and road mowing.
We, we did.
The number of bridges that we're gonna build.
She's asking for other.
That, that wasn't the question. The question is, which ent, what are all of the entities that are included in that fund that are funded from there? Besides libraries, besides roads, is there anything else that comes out of that?
There's, there's not, there's not much. I don't, I don't have an exact list of all those, but it's not a lot.
And how much has their, each, each one of those entities, how much is their funding been cut? What's their percentage of decrease?
We cut quite a bit out of the road department. I can't give you a number off.
Quite a bit's not a number. What's, what's the percentage?
Not, not really. Um, there was, there was a reduction over what their current dollars are this year to spend, but a, a large par, portion of the reason for that, um, seven-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-dollar deficit that would have been the case is because of the initial plan of adding a million dollars in transfers to the secondary road department. Uh, we did, we did make a few changes here recently, which add up to approximately two-hundred thousand, but I, I think more needs to be done.
That still doesn't answer the question. The answer to the question.
I, I believe that part, I don't wanna speak for everybody in the room, but I, I'll speak for myself, because I heard about all of this on Friday, and over the weekend, I spoke mostly by email with several people. Um, I believe one of the reasons, there may be more, people are putting your feet to the fire, is there are rumors, and that's all they are, that money has been mismanaged, possibly state law has been broken. May not even be this entity, perhaps it's a, an entity above you, a different entity, but this is your opportunity to address those concerns, those, uh, rumors that are circulating through your community. Thank you.
Um, I'd like this opportunity just to ask, I know that some of the departments did receive emails stating that there was a significant clerical error that resulted in some of the funding cuts. Could, could you please address that computer error?
So, that email you are referring to was in regard to the timeline of when some of these decisions were made. There were budget sheets that were put into the computer, and one of the columns that is part of the calculations for what ending fund balances would look like, did not have numbers in them.
The reestimate column.
Yep, the reestimate column. So, what that did is, the numbers that we had gotten before, those numbers were realized, were higher than they actually should have been, and act, higher than they actually were. It wasn't, it wasn't that money was mismanaged, or was running out the door, anything like that. It was the numbers we were looking at initially were not the full picture. But at the end of the day, that was part of the timeframe of our decision, but it did not change the situation we were in at all. Does that, can I answer your question?
So I'm looking at the, uh, budget you guys posted in the paper. At the end of twenty-two, twenty-three, you had an estimated fund balance of fifteen million, nine-hundred and three dollars, and some change. Fifteen million, nine-hundred, three thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven. Excuse me, the reestimate for twenty-three, twenty-four is eight million, six hundred and four thousand, four hundred and ninety-five. So essentially, you over-spent um, twenty-three, twenty-four year by about seven million dollars, two hundred, almost seven-point-three million dollars. Is that a correct statement? And your forecast would be, and your forecast would be over, um.
So there, there was, there was substantial dollars in the secondary roads department where equipment purchases were delayed because of COVID, supply chain issues, obviously. So there was money that was previously budgeted that kinda carried forward because of the timing of that, and we also had approximately two-point-eight million in ARPA funds that was one-time money that was also a significant factor in those dollars. So there's a lot of moving pieces to.
I understand, it just, just appears to be a lot of money being spent in the county. Um, and then, on the library end of it, I, I absolutely know how these people feel, they feel like they're catching the brunt of that.
Yeah, to bring it back to libraries.
Some, some management of money, probably, maybe we should bring it in a class or something? Would that help for budgets?
We still haven't gotten an answer as to what the budget cuts in other departments are.
Correct.
And if I could just bring it back to the libraries just a little bit, you, you kinda said that you're not trying to kick it, the, the cuts down the road, um, you want to address it right away. What, what essentially you're doing by doing that is you're going to put at least four of these small communities, the doors are gonna be closed. They don't reopen after they close, just so you know. Once you're done with the library, it is done. Most of these communities will die without their libraries.
And one dollar, I usually produce just four dollars in generational education. Like if you put one dollar towards a child, they will stay in the community, and it produces four more dollars. I'm a, this example is the worst place to cut it, because this is your future. This is, you're, you're hurting your candies. It's not helping. We are not a luxury.
I, I take issue with, and I don't wanna speak for everybody in this row, but I'm gonna. When we do our budgets, we have to factor in county, city, state, which our state funding is nothing. Um, but our city clerks are on us all the time. By June thirtieth, you should have a zero balance.
Yep.
You have to be at zero. We need to see that you needed the money that we gave you, so we are in the process of spending that money. And so you will reconsider it after July first, but if I'd have known that seven-thousand-dollar check I got from the county last week was the only one I was getting next year, I'd have probably bought a few different things.
Yes, exactly. Planning is done way in advance.
We, we plan five years in advance at libraries.
Well, and, and from, from the city side, I know there's some city clerks in here also. My budget's done. It's done, it's voted, it's published, it's, it's done, so now we've gotta go back and revamp the whole library budget.
Yes. Cities have to go back and amend their budgets?
Libraries up to the end of the city.
Before theirs have to be done. Correct.
Yeah, sure.
Jake, Jayden, uh, city administrator for the city of Algonah. Um, it's to that point in county, you know, looking not just Algonah, but other cities, and okay, come July one, what plans do you need to make? As Lori mentioned, it's, you know, twelve percent of our, uh, budget, so, you know, we found out this might be happening, it's like, well, what materials are we not gonna buy? Or what other money from the city do we come up with to put that in? Obviously, in other communities, that's, you know, much more drastic impact. Uh, we'll be the first one to, to understand, relate to the whole public notice, what you published, you can't, you know, exceed that process. Uh, but I really think for the sake of, uh, kinda planning, if, you know, at a, a, a meeting in the near future, if the board supervisors will at least obtain a motion, you know, approving their intent to fund libraries at this amount, it won't be binding. Um, but, you know, at least the majority. But, you know, at least the majority can come together and say, this is our plan. So then libraries can start, you know, if that's a little bit less than what was previously funded, um, or if it's going to be where it's at today, you know, the sooner they know that, the better. So they can start making plans for what their hours or operations are going to be July 1. You know, then once, if you're in the new fiscal year, you can do the formal amendment process. But I think just giving that, uh, a motion of, you know, what the board's intent would be. So every 12 libraries can put in, um, at a future meeting in the near future, I think would be really beneficial.
And I would add to that as far as exposures are concerned. Some of our smaller libraries are only at 21 operational hours a week. If you cut that back, even for like for us, if we cut a day or two, you're probably gonna lose your staff because they don't have enough money to sustain themselves as well. So your libraries are gonna close anyway.
You also lose your state funding.
You lose your state funding.
At minimum, we have to be open 20 hours a week, one day a weekend and one night after five. So when I go down to one day a week, do I make that just a Saturday from one to six?
Yeah, yeah. And then Lainey, are you gonna?
I'm gonna lose more money.
Yeah, and that's based on library size. Yeah, if you're on one day a week? And then, then we leave the communities. That's what happens.
Which is why all these people are here wondering what they're supposed to do and we're open one day a week. Or not there at all.
Will you as the board as a whole decide on who's in libraries? Is that up to you?
No.
No?
It'll be up to the city to decide, but if they don't have the funding, we have no choice.
Okay. Thank you.
So do you think there is a possibility you could find funds to amend the budget? I mean, can we get a commitment from, you're saying yes, but what about the other four gentlemen on the board? See one nod?
There are definitely areas that we can look at, yes.
And how high, how much of an increase will be? I mean, you know, a percentage or two or five, 10%?
Percentage of?
Well, you know, what kind of an increase?
She's asking what dollar amount is your goal to get back to? Oh.
I mean, so they, so they have an idea, you know.
Like are we going, are we going to the current funding level or are we going 10% reduction?
I think everybody would appreciate a nod, yes or no, that you are willing to.
I, I would. And, and I, I can acknowledge the desires for a motion, but at the end of the day, it, it's kind of a moot point.
The board would individually say yes, they support increasing funding for the libraries.
Yeah, that's fine. No, I don't. No.
I think what we can do is say that we will do a proposal on a budget amendment in the next fiscal year after July. And we'll have to do some discussion at that time on what we can do and how it affects the gas tax that we're gonna get from the state, all those things and all the way into the world. We can't just say a dollar amount of, without knowing how we're gonna affect the gas tax.
In the meantime, it's already cut for this coming year.
What's that?
The existing budget is already being cut for the coming year. So by then, we'll already have lost so much.
Funding doesn't start until July 1.
That does start.
With this new budget, I think what they're trying, what they're saying is they could set a date for July 9. I'm gonna use that as an example, first Tuesday.
Second.
For the second Tuesday, first meeting in the new fiscal year. Where they're gonna say, hey, we're gonna look at amending this budget because that's the first time they could amend it according to the state.
They're saying they're looking at it. They're not giving us.
Wait a second. I'm just doing that here right now. What they're saying right now is they can't give you any exact dollar amount until they look at everything to that point. But what they are saying is, or at least what I'm hearing is, is that they're willing to really look at this library budget. Because when you look at the numbers, somebody had asked for a percentage and what the difference is. But I'm in it, and you said what percentage is like the street didn't cut? You're never gonna be even close to the street budget because their number's so high and yours is so low.
That's why I asked for a percentage, not dollars.
Because they're never gonna cut a street budget by that much. We'd all be furious about that.
I, I have no idea. I have no idea what the street budget is, but you know, if it's so high that a 1% cut there would.
Correct. I'm not disagreeing with you, but.
Guys, please, please keep the.
Numbers are not going to be your cut. What you're really wanting is back to where you're at.
No, that's not what I'm asking. I think everybody here is willing to do their part.
Yeah, please, please keep the conversation orderly and don't talk over people. That is never a productive conversation.
I think what people are looking for, um, and I know I saw this on social media, but I think maybe it was Carter that had shared a list of other cuts that were made and that maybe some things have changed since then. But I think what some of the people in this group were looking for was, okay, who else was impacted besides libraries? Is that helpful? Is that a question so we can get an answer we're looking for?
I can address that real quick. That particular list was from the decisions of that day. And that was not an exhaustive list of everything we did with the budget. So that, that was just pertaining to that particular meeting.
And so that information, that didn't all happen or it did all happen? That happened?
All of those did happen, yes, on that particular day. But I, I was not going back to the beginning of the year and relaying everything.
Cause the budget is a process that's been going on for months.
Correct.
Yes.
Which is good and bad news for you guys. Like this would have been great information sooner. But I, I think that's what part of people want to hear is who else is feeling this and who else got cuts? And I don't, I still don't feel like that question's been fully answered. So if there's a way to address that a little bit?
I have a comment for you. Before July 1, I want to see each of you in the front library at least once. See what's left of the libraries. You go see what goes on with those libraries before you start cutting this money back.
Um, I just want to make sure I understand a couple things correctly. Did you mean that you were taking the funding away from the libraries because the secondary road needed that money? That work going? You were talking about how the secondary road fund was gonna be hurt if you didn't.
I don't think it was either or. I think it was, that was the situation.
It, it was a, it was a big, it was a big picture deficit focus on that budget. But it's just tying everything together on the, on the rural basic fund.
But the secondary road, whatever you normally budgeted for that, that was gonna be hurt if you didn't cut from the libraries.
So in 2223, the secondary roads is the biggest, if you guys look at the published number in the paper last week, whatever it was for Algonah, the secondary roads is the absolute biggest line item. And I get that. We're a big county. Um, they were budgeted 10, 7 in 2223. Uh, they spent 12, 9 in 2324 and they're budgeted for 2425 back at the 10, uh, 10, 3. So from my calculation, um, mm, they didn't take much of a budget cut from 22 to 24.
No, none.
None, actually. Nah, there's about a $400 difference, $400,000 difference. But that's like half a county road. So I guess that would be my question there is, and they're specific roads and transportation. So that's specifically secondary roads in Wisconsin. I know they're already cutting, and secondary roads are hard to cut because whatever you cut from them is just gonna compound. I mean, look at your county roads are chopped up. I've got one coming out of Sway City that's not scheduled till 27. It's already so potholed. Now there won't be a road left by 2027. So I get, budgeting's hard, but 1% somebody said off the roads would be what?
I don't know because I don't have the numbers, but that's.
Would be 100,000.
Yeah.
Something like that. So, I don't know. Did they take a cut? Not really. Not in my book. Not from what you published. And in fact, they overspent significantly, it appears, this year.
So that's my question. Could we get, just get sort of a non-verbal or a verbal commitment from all five of you individually that you're willing to reconsider an increase in budget to the library? Throw an amendment after July 1?
Make a motion to meet on July 9th to readdress the budget situation for the county libraries. Not that hard, Phyllis. Not, but we can hold them in July 9th while we'll be back in this room.
If.
Yes. Right, right.
No, but if.
I think you're asking for a resolution that you are committed to looking at the possibility of keeping funding for the libraries.
I, I think that, I think the date is only half or less than half of the equation here. I think the dollars are the big part of the equation. So if, if we're looking at meeting on July 9th and just having it on our agenda, I think that's good. But I think if we are going to put a motion for it, we should have a dollar amount associated as a target or a goal to, to answer the questions here.
About 272,000.
The current figure? Yeah.
If all you're shooting for right now is a goal, might as well make it 5 million.
I'm, I'm just curious. I've got a budgeting question because a lot of times, you know, it wasn't unusual. Maybe every other year we had to amend our school budget. That's not uncommon. Usually don't have to go to the first year budget year, but are you, do you, just looking forward in this current year, are you going to have to make any amendments to the current budget, do you think?
Yeah.
We already do.
Yep. And that's obviously another factor in the equation too.
Why?
Are you, are you wanting to make a motion? Otherwise I would.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to, uh, say July 9th, you have a discussion on reallocating back to 100% of what was funded from fiscal year 24.
Current, current levels?
Current, current levels.
Okay. You got notes on that?
And that includes a TECRAN too, just on the.
Yeah, that's, that's everything.
And that's, the TECRAN's already being proven in the budget. So that, that piece is already.
Tammy, I'll second that.
Wouldn't it increase the TECRAN?
We did slightly, but.
But that's when we took one either.
Yeah.
Wouldn't they take an increase that, so basically.
A motion has been made. Is there?
I, I did second it already.
We did not. We didn't do the motion.
Yeah, I know. There was about 20 conversations out in public, so I just said it to Tammy. Is there any other discussion from the board?
Reread the motion for public. When she's done writing it.
Yep.
Okay. Motion by Whacter, second by Stecker to set July 9th. I'm gonna put to add to the agenda on July 9th. Is that okay?
Yep.
Add to agenda on July 9th to have reallocation of public libraries back to 100% of what was funded in the current year.
Probably at, probably specify FY '24 levels. Or it is our current year, but I think clarification. Yeah, current, the actual number would be good. Is there any questions or discussion from the board?
Who decide on this?
Well, we, yeah, we, we have to act as a board here. Please hang on.
Do you consider the fund balances at that time?
That will, that'll be part of our conversation.
It'll all be part of the whole conversation. Be part of the conversation, yes.
Yep.
Okay. So what's?
Yep, that is. Any other questions or comments from the board? Just. Roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Nath?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes. Motion carried unanimous. You got a question?
So will you make a decision that day or you're just gonna start?
That will be discussion only. We will have to go through the formal budget amendment process to make any formal decision.
Your fire's posting and all of that.
Right. In the meantime though, you'll, you'll do your digging and checking and see what.
Yes.
It's not gonna start July 9th.
No, no, it'll be an ongoing process until there, I'm sure. We should have a good idea of where we need to be. Right, right.
Okay, so I've got a question. There seems to be some confusion on the side of the house here. From the county, we used to get about, I don't, I budgeted 18,000. And then we got a $5,500 tech grant. They were two different line items. The 7,000 I'm getting, does that replace the 18 and I'm still getting the tech? Or am I getting seven flat out? I'm getting seven flat out. So not getting a tech grant. Okay.
That is the tech grant. That they're, they're giving you the tech grant instead of.
So the county, wait a minute. So the county's not kicking any allocation into the libraries?
Oh, it is. That, that is. The tech grant.
The tech grant comes from the county?
Yeah, that's still from, still from the same rural funds.
So, wait a minute. So then am I pulling?
So our hands are tied to use it for technology.
Well, that's, I was just gonna ask. Then you have to loosen up what we can use that money for. If you're gonna cut us to seven and you're gonna call it a tech grant, then that limits my.
That brings your double tariff.
Yeah.
You're gonna use the money on tech.
I can't use it for anything except tech. Oh, now that's just iffy.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
Okay, I didn't understand that. Oh, gentlemen. Thank you still.
Well, thank, thank you all for coming today. I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Second. Yeah.
He's a punching bag. Do you, do you get this every year?
Thanks, Kyle.